Good evening, everybody. We're going to call this meeting to order. This is our 33rd regular session. And we're going to start with the invocation led by Councilmember Brubaker, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would join me in standing, if you are able.
Let us, today and always, dwell on the positive and dispel the negative. Let us give thanks for our many and abundant blessings, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our calling, indeed for life itself, for sustenance and for friendship, for the ability to be involved in useful work, and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Consequently, give us wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. Give us a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, confidence in what is good and fitting, and the ability to work together in harmony, even when there is honest disagreement. For all these things, we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you. That was a great invocation, by the way. Announcements. We are operating under the rules of procedure adopted September 24th, 2013. Use of cellphones during meetings is restricted, so please silence yours, if you haven't already. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the clerk for the inclusion in the official record. Just to go over our meeting schedule for this month. Next week, on the agenda, it says that the State of the City is next Tuesday. That is actually Tuesday, March 18th. Working with the Chamber of Commerce in setting that up. And we thank them. So the State of the City will be on March 18th. We will have a work session next week, on Tuesday, the 4th. Another work session on the 11th. A work session on Tuesday, March 18th, at 4:00 PM. And then our regular session on the 25th. Some other announcements. I do just want to let everybody know that, based on some feedback that we've gotten last week, also some questions that councilmembers still continue to have. We are going to be removing the two items, Item C and D, under unfinished business to a special session scheduled right now for March 11th. So that will give us a chance on March 4th to further clarify questions that councilmembers have about the amending the ordinances under consideration, Chapters 95 and Chapter 197. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows those items are pulled from today's agenda and will be put on next week's work session. And a special session for approval will be set for March 11th. Another announcement. I just will update everybody on Urban Partners. I encourage you to show up to the library on Thursday evening, 6:00. The Urban Partners will be hosting a listening session, essentially, for the community at the library in the community room. It'll be broken down into three stations, essentially. There'll be a housing station. There'll be a cultural arts and entertainment station. And there'll be a business and retail development station. And the idea is, if you have a particular interest, you can go to just one station, or you can go around to all the different stations and provide your feedback on the area that's interesting to you. I have some other comments that I'll save for later on just where we're at with Urban Partners. I know a lot of folks are curious about that. So I will save those comments for later. At this point, I would like to move into our agenda for the appointment of Michelle Hepburn as our Director of Finance. So if Michelle does not mind coming forward. Thank you. I'm going to administer the oath to Michelle, and then make sure you sign the book. We have your certificate of qualification. Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Michelle Hepburn.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the State of Maryland.
To the State of Maryland.
And to support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And to support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Hagerstown.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Hagerstown.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Director of Finance.
Execute the office of Director of Finance.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the laws and Constitution of this state.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. I think it's worth noting that Michelle has been our acting finance director until this very moment, and that she's very well-respected by staff, department heads who've gotten to know her and see her work, along with our city administrator. And we're very pleased to make this appointment tonight because she has worked very hard for the City of Hagerstown, puts in long hours, works weekends, sacrifices time away from her family. And she's really shown her dedication to the city. And I want to thank her for that. Thank you. I think we're going to do -- do you want one photo? Tell us where to stand. Famous last words. Just one more. Okay. And at this point, we want to recognize Black History Month. And I want to invite Reggie Turner from the Dolman Black Heritage Museum up to present this proclamation. There have been a month full of activities going on, I know. This proclamation is for Black History Month, February 2014. Whereas Black History Month is an annual celebration of a time and of a time for recognizing achievements by Black Americans in U.S. history. Americans have recognized Black History Month annually since 1926. And whereas the 2014 Black History Month theme, Civil Rights in America, chronicling the important milestones by African-Americans and others in the battle for civil rights and equal treatment under the law. And whereas Black History Month is a time for all Americans to reflect and celebrate the contributions that African-Americans have made in their struggles for freedom and equality, therefore deepening our understanding of our nation's history. Now therefore, be it resolved that with the support of the city council, I, David Geisberts, the Mayor of the City of Hagerstown, do hereby proclaim and recognize February 2014 to be Black History Month, and encourage all citizens to join us in celebrating the diversity and character of our community, and highlight the importance of sharing our culture, customs, and traditions with those around us. Reggie, thank you, on behalf of the Dolman Black Heritage Museum, for being here.
Thank you.
And would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I would, actually. First, on behalf of the board, I would like to thank the council and the mayor for this proclamation in regards to Black History Month. For us, it is a very exciting time for the Dolman Black Heritage Museum. We are working diligently towards our goal of securing a permanent location for the artifacts. So we would like to thank you for your continued support, and also the community support in regards to this project as well. My vision as the interim president is that there will soon be a day that I will be able to wake up and say to my daughters on a Saturday morning, "Let's go to the Dolman Museum." And that's our regular routine. And that'll be a great day for us all.
Indeed, for the whole city.
Yes.
Thanks so much, Reggie.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. At this time, we're going to do citizen comments. I just want to remind folks that citizen comments are limited to five minutes per individual. Meetings are televised and recorded. Your comments will be on air and on tape and on YouTube. The first name on the list is Timothy Lewis. And as you come to the podium, if you don't mind saying your name and your address for the record, please.
Hi, Mayor and Council. My name's Timothy Lewis, and I live at 681 Westwood Street here in Hagerstown. I have a question. I've been all over the city about the snow clearing, and nobody seems to know what the codes and laws are. I have a gentleman up the street from me that plows the snow. And I had 20 tons of snow pushed down in front of my property, where the City of Hagerstown had to send a front loader and a dump truck to haul it away. And this is an ongoing situation, but there is no codes. The only code that I know of that the Code Department tells me is for cleaning your sidewalks. You would think that the city would have something to deterrent this, to push this snow down in my property. I'm sure you wouldn't want it. Nobody in this room would want it. Mrs. Nye knows who I'm talking about. But I don't know where to go from there.
So your question is about snow removal on a street?
Yes, sir.
I see. Well, I'm sure we have your name and address. And I know there's staff folks here who can reach out to you in terms of what kinds of remedies you might have. I mean, the city, I think, has done a pretty good job of keeping the roads clear.
The city does a wonderful job of cleaning our street.
But you're correct in terms of the only codes I'm aware of for snow removal have to do with clearing your sidewalks within a certain time after the snow.
The other night on the news, Captain Langston made a statement that it's illegal to put the snow in the street, and it was up to a $500 fine for doing this.
Yeah.
Is this true?
Well, I would imagine that the reason we clear streets is not for people to shovel the snow back out into the traffic lanes. Certainly, if nothing else, it's annoying. And second of all, it doesn't do anything when it comes to creating a safe travelway for motor vehicles. So I would assume that if that's what you heard the police department say, then that's something that can be enforced. But I think that the issue is you'd have to catch someone in the act of doing it.
I have it on film.
So, I mean, I would advise you to contact the police department, then.
I already have.
Okay.
And there's nothing they can do about it because there's no code.
Well.
Snow already existed in the street. Or somebody didn't shovel it off of their property into the street. They moved it from one part.
What's going on? He's pushing it down from his property in front of his street, down to my property, two houses down. He cleans the whole street up around his area and pushes all the snow down to my area. Now, I'm sure, like I said, there's nobody -- the city had to come out with a dump truck and a front loader to remove it so that one lane would be open.
Well, let's talk a little more about it. I mean, if you don't mind, we can talk about it, you know, offline, as it were.
Right. You said I had five minutes. I could stand here for an hour. But I know there's other people waiting.
Right. Well, I think you raised a legitimate concern, and I definitely want to follow up on it with you.
Who would I come to talk to, sir?
Well, Chief Holtzman just had his hand up back there. So if I were to be you, I would take the opportune time now, since he's not up here, to go and speak to him. He's right in the back there.
Is that Chief, what's his name?
Chief Holtzman.
Okay.
Yeah, he's sitting right in the back there.
Thank you, Mrs. Nye.
And am I getting this correctly? Is that the guy that is he also, is he plowing his end of the street, where the city has come back, but then the city hasn't completed whatever? Is he then moving the other snow?
You rode with him the other day. And he plowed out some other people's streets. But what he's doing, he's like four houses up. He starts and pushes it all down here to my property.
Okay, yeah.
And I had, and you were right there. And you saw that one lane was completely blocked off at the turn. And that's when the city had to come out with a dump truck. I mean, courtesy would tell you.
Yeah.
You wouldn't do it to somebody else's property.
Yeah.
I mean, you wouldn't want me to come over with a pickup truck and plow in front of your house and pile it all up.
Oh, I have all that going on, so, you know.
Oh, well, you know, we all have.
Doesn't matter to me. It's, you know, it just happens.
We all have problems. I don't have anything.
Oh, no. But I understand. But talk to Chief Holtzman, honestly.
Okay, I would do that.
Yeah.
Okay. Mayor, Council, y'all, thank you for your time. And if I need to get ahold of you, I can.
You know where to find us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next citizen is Danny Richards. Danny Richards?
Danny Richards, 900 West Washington Street, Hagerstown, Maryland. The, I guess you're going to ask, what's this had to do with this meeting tonight and its laws? Well, I have a business. I have only two rentals in Hagerstown. I have 12 in West Virginia. What I worry about is businesses is going to be next, fine, when the police department is called. Now, you want the landlords, how about the businesses? Are they next? I'd like to read some of the problems that I have right now. I'm the owner of the city wash tub at 145 West Church Street, Hagerstown, Maryland. The City of Hagerstown will never have new businesses as long as Outreach Center is here in Hagerstown. I have had a laundromat city wash tub for 25 years. I've never had these kind of problems until Outreach Center came to this area. List of some of the problems. Torn ribs out of the dryers, drums. Tour top or front panels off top of the dryers trying to get changed. Busted front of pop machines trying to get changed. Busted coin max on washers trying to get changed. Steel toilet paper and the hole to the bathroom. I have a terrible time with them coming in, even though we have a sign for customers' use only. I mean, crap on the floor. Toilet seat and floor, all crap on them. Things like downspiding was even taken off the building. I guess due for the money, for the metal. Copper stolen off central air conditioner. $560 to repair. It's like every time they open the time of the year, that's when my problems begin. I installed cameras, which I watch at home. I took these people to court for loitering. Court says, "I need no trespassing signs." That's the law. Already had no loitering signs. Court does not want to fool these people. Why should businesses suffer? After all, we are the taxpayers. The Outreach Center locks people out during the day. So when it's cold, they have no place to go but to hang out in businesses. This is the problem. They do not, they do not allow them in the shelter. When it's cold, they're kicked out in the street. Some of these people get a one-way ticket to Hagerstown. They come from all other states, out of jails. So these people are some dangerous people. I have been shoved, cussed at, trying to run these people out of my business. Every year when Outreach Center opens, my problems, that's when they start. Outreach Center needs to provide shelter 24 hours a day, not locking people out, so Hagerstown can clean our streets up, so new businesses will want to come to Hagerstown. Rescue Mission wants a very good, very good shelter. They do not put up with people drinking alcohol. Outreach people drink alcohol at my laundromat and also allowed in Outreach Center while intoxicated. Why do, again, why do taxpayers have to put up with this? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. And I got your letter in the mail. And I just wanted to know, I did forward it on to Chief Holtzman. And I understand you have a meeting this Friday with Jody from the Reach Center. So I'm hopefully going to be kept in the loop on what happens. But I appreciate you getting in touch with your concern.
Yeah, my question here again is, this new -- my question again, this new law. It starts with landlords. But is it going to go to businesses also? When the police department's called too many times, the businesses are fine, you know? The problem is, you know, with the type of people we're getting out to Outreach Center, it funnels down. They meet girlfriend, boyfriend. Then they move in apartment. Then they become a renter. So the landlord, it changes our, the type of people we have in this area now.
To address your direct question, this, what we're considering in terms of the crime-free legislation is not inclusive of what you're concerned about. But I do appreciate you raising the concern. And I encourage you to keep working with your partner there, your neighbor, basically. And keep everybody, keep the police department informed of what's going on. And certainly, you can keep communicating with me.
Yes. Okay.
All right. Thank you. Next is Allen Johnson.
First of all, I'd like to speak on a positive note. Put on a smiley face here for a minute.
Allen, could you speak up a little bit, please? It's hard to hear you. That thing doesn't work.
Anyway, I sort of wanted to speak on a positive note. First of all, in answer to the question about snow removal, a couple of weeks ago, I was going by the old RD McKee Building. There was somebody there shoveling ice and snow into the street, causing a hazard. And I thought at the time, somebody ought to do something about this. Half an hour later, I came back. There were five police cruisers there, and all the snow was back up on the driveway. So they did something to alleviate that problem. So I'll give credit to the police department. I'm Allen Johnson. I live in Mullinsville. I want to thank Mayor Geisberts, Councilman Munson, and Brubaker, City Administrator Zimmerman, Chief Smith, and John Lestition for meeting with Nancy Allen, Mike Stanford, and myself last week. And I think it was a very positive meeting. I think some things were accomplished. And it reminds me of my bank's motto. It says, "Listening is only the beginning." And I hope that in this case, in our case, that our proposal was something that we can work with and is a workable solution to the crime-free issue right now. And I sort of compared this to several years ago. More than 10 years ago, we, when the rental licensing program was introduced, and obviously then, we were at odds over the text of the ordinance. And because we were able to sit down on many meetings and actually come up with a workable solution, we went forward with the rental licensing program. And also, our landlord association was able to work with the code compliance. We've met with them many times over the last 10 years to improve the program. And they listened to our concerns, and we came up with a good plan. And I hope that we can do the same thing with this crime-free ordinance. I think there are a lot of possibilities. And I do appreciate you tabling this for now and hope we can move forward with the best possible solution. Thank you.
I just want to clarify, after last meeting, which was February 11th, Nancy Allen requested a meeting with myself and two councilmembers. And so we had that meeting last week. They presented us with a PowerPoint proposal. But I just want to make sure that we've been listening all along. I think we've been making appropriate changes along the way to make this a better product. But there are remaining questions that councilmembers have about the specific texts of the language. So we're going to come back and work on that again next week. Thank you. And next is Nancy Allen.
Hi. Nancy Allen from Penmar Regional Association of Railtors. And I just wanted to also thank the mayor and the councilmembers that were there at our meeting on the 18th. We felt it was a very good opportunity to present some ideas that we had collaboratively so that we could work together to try to find a good solution to the problem that we have and are faced with now in our neighborhoods. And I just wanted to formally thank you, the mayor, and the councilmembers that were there so that we can hopefully continue the dialogue. And I understand that you've been asking for our support, and we appreciate that, and are looking forward to another meeting in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. Next is Mary Haynes.
I'm Mary W. Haynes from 27 Laurel Street in Hagerstown. And I'm basically here because I owe a debt to Code and the Fire Marshal for coming out and delivering us from an evil situation. They informed the landlord that the lease said one adult and one child. And they found there to be one adult female, one adult male, three children. And the pit bull was no longer there, but had been a problem. Therefore, the lease had been violated. They were, there was not enough space for the occupants that were there. And the landlord was told to evict these people or suffer a fine. I wish that the tenant who had had to take out a peace order, this woman was actually granted a peace order in our district court against the situation that she faced across the hall. I wish that she had come, but she did not. She's a schoolteacher, and she has a difficult life right now. But if it hadn't been for Code and the Fire Marshal doing their jobs, we would still have the problem that was so grave that the tenant had to be granted a peace order against these other tenants. The landlord knew all about it from day one. He knew what his lease said, and he knew what was in that apartment. And he would come up with such things as, "If I put out that pit bull, I'm going to have to put out the other dog that's here." Even though the other dog was under a lease that acknowledged her existence and was having extra funds charged because of that other dog's being there. I can't get over the charming smile that was always on that landlord's face when he was confronted with, "Why don't you do something about X and Y and Z?" The empty bottle, box that a police officer had to come out and open and tell us did not contain a carbine, even though that's what the box said that it held. And that's something else I need to do is thank the police department for coming out, and 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 coming out. I lost track. The graffiti situation seems to have revolved around this group. They remained in place. I could go on, but I'm not going to. Basically, what I'm trying to say is, you all have got to see this from the tenant's point of view as well. The gentleman, that poor fellow who owns the business that has the clothes washing going on, he's not the only ones who are faced, who is faced with discriminating among the inhabitants, the citizens, of the streets in trying to come up with good tenants. And it has to be done. I don't know how you legislate that, how you make landlords use the association has available. I know, because I used to belong to it. I am a landlord myself. They have available background checks. They have reference lists on bad tenants and maybe good tenants as well. The 25 and 1/2 Laurel Street landlord said that it cost him $10. And he had found a site on the Internet that was free. And somehow or other, that's how he managed to come up with what he had put into that building time after time after time, this free website. I'm giving you information from, as the gentleman who owned the business, the point of view of those of us who have to deal with the less-than-perfect, the less-than-ideal citizens walking the streets who want to come in and use a business or be tenants. And then to finish up, I would like to say that I appreciate that somebody has done something with the corner of 49 Jonathan, the Hamilton Hotel. But I would like to add to that, that the county administration building is filthy. It needs to have, whatever those joints are called, pointed. I think that's the word. And it needs a good wash down. And I sent you an email back in November stating that it was really terrible that out front -- front of this building flies a flag that says, "This is Hagerstown, welcome." And it sits on a corner with a triptych, empty window, window with the paper falling down, window with paper intact. And then, over there at 49, you have managed to get the slatted blinds fairly straight, and some of the windows are empty, but also, it continues that there are two windows that have no glass. I think Bobby Nye and I could go out to that place and pound back into place that particle board that's falling away from the one frame. And what I've done for the city is come in and complain, so that you can now go to one of the judges with a case and say, "An aggravated citizen has come in and come in, and will probably show up again," so that you can make a case before the judge that it matters what our town looks like. And I do hope I haven't borged you to tears. Maybe the next time around, I can be a little more energetic. But the same problems are out there. I'm going to come in and complain about the same problems, because I'm not the only one sitting there looking at it and thinking, "The administration hasn't got any energy or any competence." If this mess is going to continue, you fire, get light a fire under whoever's building, the legal case, to take those landlords in.
Thanks, Mary.
From the Hamilton Hotel, 49 Jonathan, and go down and talk to your compatriots at the county administration building, and tell them to use a fire hose on the place. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary. Next up is Donna Menser. Donna?
Good evening.
Hi, Donna.
I'm here. My name is Donna Menser. I live at 443 Clarendon Avenue. I have been a resident there for 33 years. And my concern is an interest, and I'm glad that at least you are aware of situations occurring with the renters, landlords, and what all you have been discussing over the past few months. In my neighborhood, for many years, it was primarily, my husband and I were the young ones. The elderly were there. Over about the last eight years, nine of the properties, the ladies that were living there have either passed away or in a nursing home. The properties are being bought up. People that are being brought in have not been the best neighbors. I have many stories I could share with you as to what has been taking place. One, for instance, my husband and I came home one night, and they were fighting in the middle of the street. And mind you, we've lived there a long time, and this has been very rare that this has happened. We backed our car up, turned around, found a parking place, and by the time we got out, all we could hear was people yelling to get on the ground, raise their hands. And my husband and I ran, got back in the car. The police were there. They had two people on the ground. Another person that had been fighting, I don't know where he went to. By the time things got settled, we went to our house, and we were informed that the people they had on the ground, and they were two ladies, were carrying loaded guns, and they were ready to fire. They were family members to one of the people that lived on our street. They came from the DC area to help her settle a dispute on our street. The landlord knew nothing about it. I think when situations like that occur, I think there should be some way that he is left known that this doesn't continue. Unfortunately, that's just one thing that took place from out of this resident. That was two years ago. The people moved at the end of summer. The people that came in were friends, and the landlord brought them in. He cleaned the house out in the morning and moved the friends in in the afternoon. And I heard the gentleman back here talk about code enforcement and what have you. It's to my knowledge that when a property is vacated, it should be inspected before anybody moves in. That's not being done. And again, addressing the situation that is being discussed by you all, I would hope that something could be done to help us people living there to keep this from happening. The gentleman back here mentioned the landlord association. Two of the properties on my street that are side by side, their landlords don't even live in the state. They're hard to get a hold of, to even complain about. And as I said, we've lived there 33 years, and I am a landlord too, for 30 years. So I realize the situation on both sides, but when you're living amongst it, and you know that nothing is being done to protect you, your family, and your neighborhood, I would hope that something can be worked out. Not to go after an individual person or whatever, but to be done, worked out, you know, in a good manner, that everybody could work together, so that everybody can live comfortably here in this town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Donna. I really appreciate your feedback. The next person up to speak is Todd Grimes. Todd?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Todd Grimes. I'm the union president for the Hagerstown Professional Firefighters. What I'd like to do tonight, we, as the four bargaining units, would like to make a friendly request to the city council to amend the charter, to add an ordinance that would recognize all four bargaining units and allow for interest arbitration. I know that's a lot said at one point, and if that's something that we can't agree upon, we'd like to know if the city would put this request on the ballot for November's election in referendum form, so the citizens of Hagerstown could make this decision for the city. That's our request.
If you could submit that request in writing, we will further consider it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, Janet Bartels. Hi, Janet.
Hi. I live at South Mulberry Street. And I am here tonight talking about the whole urban core revitalization process. I have lived for the last nine years in a city center neighborhood, a neighborhood that's included in the arts and entertainment district. I've been active in neighborhoods first since the inception of our Elizabeth Town East neighborhood, which is, I think, one of the largest downtown neighborhoods. It encompasses from Baltimore Street to Randolph, from the center alley, right behind the library, which includes the Massey property, down to South Mulberry Street. So I was at the neighborhood's focus group, and I will be attending the public input session. But I'm, on Thursday evening. But I'm concerned about this study process that is aimed at creating a data-driven, reality-based roadmap for city center redevelopment with taking into account the census information on the city website, and given the effect of the bursting of the housing bubble and the declining home values in my core city center neighborhood. Since the house was purchased in 2005, the value has declined more than 30% over what was paid for, not including any improvements we may have put in, I may have put into the house. And my concern is that I don't see, and reported in any of the articles about the urban, about this process, I don't see any of the data that is included in the packet on the website about this. I don't see any of this census data that is so, about the downtown, that is so vital to the revitalization of our downtown core. I do not believe that we can have a vibrant downtown, or we can have a vibrant vision for that downtown, without having a vibrant vision for our downtown neighborhoods in which everyone living in the core has a chance for a decent life. I want, I'm here tonight to talk, just very briefly, about bringing all these voices in the center city that I haven't heard in this whole process, and making sure that they are, they have, they do have a stake, and make sure that they are considered stakeholders. Home renters are greater than 75% in the downtown core and the southeast. Yet, there is no voice with which you are getting input from all these renters. There's no tenants' association that I've heard speak up on behalf of the renters in the downtown core, and what are their living conditions? And to have their voice heard, we've heard from the landlord association, and it was given in the paper that the president said, just kind of fed up, and he represented 300 of the 2,100 landlords? That's only a seventh of the population. So we need some other voices here in the mix. The poverty rate is great in the downtown core and in the city neighborhoods. In fact, there's a large income gap between the city's outer areas and its inner core. And one census tract within the urban core has a median income of less than $20,000, while the median household income for Hagerstown is listed as at $36,000. The education...
Janet, you have to wrap it up.
Pardon?
It's been five minutes.
Five minutes are up?
Yeah. If you want to wrap up, make a statement to wrap up.
Yes, I am. The educational level is, where at least one in five persons over the age of 25 in much of Hagerstown's urban core does not have a high school or an equivalency. And according to, the unemployment rate in the urban core is 18 to 30%. So we need jobs, we need education, and we need to all take public funds, the city, the county, and the school district, and work together and figure out, how do we address the quality of life for our downtown neighborhoods as well as our downtown core retail section? Thank you.
Thanks, Janet. The last person to sign up is James Devine. James Devine.
My name's James Devine. Live post office, Box 2217, Hagerstown, Maryland. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. There's always been a problem with the homeless in the town, and I think it's never been addressed by the city. The outreach center, as was said, they push the people out in the morning in the cold. They have no place to go. Part of it's just society in itself, but part of it's just the minimum wage that's on the table right now. The minimum wage is a level of poverty, and it's like a rotating door of poverty that you never get out of. And I'd ask that the city council, in any way it could, to express that there should be a raise in the minimum wage in the state level, instead of being opposed, as it is by some of the legislators in Annapolis now. And then, this rental, this rental on nuisances, it should be expanded into the businesses. You know, if it's with the cold weather shelter, they should be cited for it. They should be cited for it, because then they should be told not to allow those people in that center, you know? And then, maybe that might eliminate some of the problems. Also, it should be expanded to households, owners of households, because some of these households have people, personnel, kids, that cannot be controlled. So also, it should be extended, not only to rental properties, but to people that own property, because then they could be cited for having a nuisance property too. And this thing should be expanded to include not only rental properties, but everybody within the city of Hagerstown. The crime in the town is somewhat disturbing, because, you know, when you read about people getting mugged and robbed and stabbed in town, it's very troubling. You know, is it a place where you want to walk at night, you know, or feel safe at night? You know, and I'm not saying that it's not. The police department not doing their job, but sometimes, when you see these burglaries and stuff, there should be a follow-up of fingerprints trying to be taken to associate people with this. And I don't think that's being done at this time. But Mr. Gaspie, let me ask you a question personally. Have you ever ridden with the police citizen patrol?
Have I ever ridden with citizen patrol?
Yes.
No, I have not.
Well, I think it would be a good experience for you to ride with them to learn more about the city. You know, Mr. Bruchey did it. You know, he did it on numerous occasions, you know? I think if he did it, you could do it too. Also, I'm disturbed about your conduct when you appoint people in the downtown development without the input from the city council. You know, this is democracy, and for the democracy, you don't make independent decisions which would affect the whole community as a whole. And I'm somewhat troubled that, when I read some time ago, that you selected people to look at the downtown without consent or advisement from the people that sit around you. The library is charging a dollar an hour after two hours of time down there. Maybe the city could, since it's got the parking garage, maybe it could save 50 cents an hour. Not to cut the library, but to give the people more time to be at the library down there. I think two hours, it says free library, well, that's not too free sometimes. And usually, sometimes it takes more than two hours when you're doing research in a library. But maybe the city could set up some type of program where people could use the parking garage down there at a lower rate than what the library is asking for now. And the speed cameras, I think the city should set up more speed cameras within the city, you know? Do they get any cut from the speed camera setup around the school districts now?
Who?
The city.
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, is it a percentage, or?
We pay the contractor a percentage.
Oh, you pay the contractors to come in and do it? Well, there should be places where you might have mobile speed cameras, where you can move them from place to place, you know, within the city. But within the city, it sort of gets crazy driving sometimes. Of course, it gets crazy driving any time out here in the streets. And that's about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, that is it for anyone who signed up. Is there anyone who did not sign up that would wish to speak? Mr. Wheeler, please come forward.
My name is Winslow Wheeler. I live at 213 South Prospect Street. I've met or know most of you. I didn't plan on speaking here tonight, but I felt compelled to, because the landlords are here at it again, and they seem to be talking like they feel they're on a roll. That concerns me. I live in a house on South Prospect Street in a historic district, surrounded by four Sloan Lord dwellings. The problems we have are not leaky faucets, are not an occasional argument. They're prostitution, burglarizing neighbors, selling drugs, using drugs, fights in the street. We're talking about... We're talking about serious things that the crime-free legislation is trying to do something about, and the landlords don't want us to do things about it. When I brought up the issue with some landlords, I asked them to do something about it. They said, "Well, what do you want me to do?" Obviously, they need training. They need to know what they are responsible for and what they're not responsible for. Just as they expressed their confusion at this meeting last time you heard about this legislation, they don't want to be held responsible. They resist wanting to learn what's their responsibility and what's not their responsibility. This is not just the bad landlords. Thirty-nine structures were identified as problem structures. The four around me wouldn't qualify for those 39, don't qualify for those 39. There's a lot of landlord property flying under the regulation radar here. The properties are well in excess of that 39 number. Finally, we were here four years ago. We address these kinds of issues. The landlords were here saying, "Oh, don't make us do this, don't make us do that." And the city complied. There are two parts of that process that went on then, and there's two parts now apparently. There's the public discussion where things sound reasonable. There's the private discussion, the meetings to which the citizens like myself or the renters are not invited to and don't participate in. The process that we had four years ago was not the brilliant success that you heard about earlier tonight and a couple of weeks ago. The process resulted in lower standards of inspections and fewer inspectors. That's why you heard one landlord complain about the real problem she had with somebody in her neighborhood. There was a landlord and she couldn't get an inspector in there. That problem continues. We've got garbage in the streets because of these Sloan Lords, and you want to take that out of the reasons why some property should be designated a problem property? Let's get serious about this legislation. No version is perfect, but what the landlords are trying to do is to create loopholes and to make sure there's lax enforcement, just like we had four years ago. We're watching this process. We want you to do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Winslow. I just want to make sure everyone's clear. We're not deferring this legislation to a future meeting because of a meeting that happened last week. We're deferring this legislation because there are still questions that some council members have about the way the language is written currently that we want to get clarity on before we go ahead with the introduction of the ordinance. We introduced the ordinance at last month's regular session. We have 60 days to take action after introduction. We will still be well within that 60-day window. So I do respect both sides in terms of wanting to have your voice heard equally, and I think you have council members who are very open to, to hearing that. You heard me say, we have made changes along the way. Four months now we've been working on this, and we've been open to all opinions about what this legislation considers. I do know, just from speaking with all of my council members individually and at these meetings, there is still support for taking action to improve housing and neighborhoods in Hagerstown. We cannot, as Mr. Wheeler say, go on ignoring these problems or reducing code enforcement or personnel to enforce those codes. So I do think that we are on our way to approving a good improvements to these ordinances that already exist and making them even better and giving our police the tools to enforce the laws, giving code enforcement the tools. Also strengthening landlords' position as well as tenants. I don't see the risk in having a written lease. I don't understand, I still have not been told with great satisfaction how raising the bar lowers property values, as some people would argue. I still haven't heard a good answer to that question. So I think, at least in my opinion, this legislation is on track to be passed. There are a few minor things that we have to work out in terms of questions outstanding about how this legislation would be implemented, but I just want there to be no misunderstanding that, that there are forces at work trying to derail this legislation. That is just not true. So I just want to reassure everybody about that if you are concerned. But in the meantime, you know, we will still receive emails, phone calls. I encourage everybody to come to the meeting next week, continue to share your opinions, get your neighbors to make phone calls and emails. We will consider all of those points of view. So, thank you. Is there anyone else who did not sign up to speak who would like to make some comments?
Yeah, me. That would be Penny Mai. That would be a member of Neighborhoods First, representing another member of Neighborhoods First using cattle down here with failed insurance. I apologize to council members because I had to get downstairs and I did not know that the crime-free ordinance was going to be tabled until we actually got down here. So could I please know exactly who were the noes that said as far as tabling it, not going forward? I'd like to know.
No vote.
I was not ready to go forward.
Okay, I mean, who else? I mean, was it consensus of just you and Lou?
No, I decided that based on concerns I had heard, we're moving it from the agenda.
Okay, but there wasn't anybody-
No vote.
There wasn't, there wasn't a vote. There wasn't anybody in favor of going forward with it. And that may have only been me anyway, so I just needed to know that, all right? Again, this was an email that had come in from Judy Wheeler, and it was a response to the article that was put in the newspaper, I believe it was on Sunday. "A serious problem requires a serious and effective solution. As Chief Holtzman has articulated, this is about crime and the viability of neighborhoods. As my own neighborhood can attest, the activities that are defined within the qualifying calls for service have a significant, have a significant impact upon the quality of life in our neighborhood and are entrenched in rental properties. The city of Hagerstown has a particularly challenging issue because of the mixed residential composition of so many of our neighborhoods: single-family, duplex, multi-units, coupled with the fact that the majority of rental properties are non-owner occupied. Those of us residing in the neighborhoods are seeing the properties..." Wait a minute. "...those of us residing in the neighborhoods are seeing the problem. We are living with the problem. We spend countless hours trying to highlight the potential of our neighborhoods while mitigating the effects of neglectful property management so that new energy and investment will occur in these transitional urban neighborhoods. Is a seminar too much to ask of, and to ask of our rental property owners? If so, ignorance of an ordinance does not exempt them from complying with it. This is not about what makes life harder or easier for a renter, for a rental property owner. It is about solving a problem. We don't enact legislation because of certain percentage of people are causing the problem. We enact legislation because of the impact of the problem requires it. I would hope that the city can stand fast in their efforts and that the rental property owners and realtors would embrace their part of the solution." There was further comments from Judy. "The neighborhoods have had to become more aware of rental licensing requirement, code violations, build relationships with the police department, et cetera, in order to try to stabilize their neighborhoods and protect them from further decline, an activity that benefits all well-intentioned property owners. The neighborhood residents, the police, and the city are engaged here. The rental property owners are missing part of the equation. Let's remember that with an, with an optional multi-unit crime-free housing program, at least in my neighborhood, those we ask the police to reach out and engage did not take it. If you make the course optional, it shouldn't be when they've already hit the threshold for excessive calls for service. It should be perhaps after two calls or one if it's a felony. Is the fear of rental property owners, the fact that they know the problem, and is even worse than it may be portrayed? If you continue to operate a vehicle in an unsafe manner, your license is revoked. Why shouldn't it be the same because you're operating a property in an unsafe manner? Why is the continued, the continued argument that people don't invest because there are too many regulations? Without them, we set no standard for what we want to achieve in the city of Hagerstown. We would get more under-capitalized investment and substandard rental properties. Do we need that?" And that was from, that was from Judy Wheeler. I think that it's also very important, as I'm sitting there as a council member, that we have Neighborhoods First groups that we recognize, and I, and some of the other emails has said, you know, "We really haven't had Neighborhoods Feast people at the table." We've heard landlords who own properties, but we have not yet heard from Neighborhoods First. And I think that's something too, that if we're going to go over this again, then let's get all the players on board. Thank you.
Thanks, Penny. I would say that I've gotten a number of correspondences. I would imagine you have two from members of Neighborhoods First Groups.
But landlords, real estate people are not hearing what we are hearing unless they are being sent to landlords, okay?
Sure.
And that's the thing. The whole focus is landlords, real estate, all right? And I think that you've got to watch more attention.
Thanks, Penny. One last call. Any citizens didn't sign up who'd like to speak? Yes, sir, please come forward, state your name and address.
My name is Eugene Anderson. I live in Pross, uh, Mount area, Maryland. I own four rental properties here in Hagerstown.
Sir, can you speak up a little bit?
Yes.
It's really difficult to hear. We have bad equipment around here.
I'm sorry. I have four rental properties here in Hagerstown, two of which I purchased, and they were basically shells and had been vacant for two to three years. I have renovated both of those. In fact, one of those properties, when it was up for, when housing came in to inspect it, the inspector took pictures of the interior of the building because of the improvements and the, from, to take back to the office and show the improvement because everybody in the code enforcement had been to that building before, and he wanted to show what it looked like now. And I continue to maintain that. And I take exception to the comments about needing to take responsibility or should take responsibility. It's not a question of that. Those properties are my responsibility. There's no question of that. It should never be a question. I am proud of the properties that I have here. I think I have a good working relationship with the code enforcement folks, with Section 8 inspections. And I really take exception to the kind of slap in the face at landlords generally that we don't care. Now, there are some very real issues in that it, it may take some time to get rid of a tenant. And I have on occasion tried to get rid of a tenant because of the violation of the lease and the number of people and ages of the tenants. And district court would not support that. So, you know, there are issues I think we are, as landlords, are willing to, to step up to. But there should be an awareness also that I can't just talk to somebody out in the street. And in fact, I have, out of the last three tenants that I, that I have brought in, one of them was, or a couple was living in their car, and they are living in one of my properties, and they're, at least for the last three months, have been good tenants. The other person was, was in the, was just shy of living on the street. She's been an excellent tenant so far. Now, they haven't made it to the year of the lease yet, but, you know, tenants, you know, I, I work with tenants to try to keep them off the street and in, you know, reasonable, decent housing. And I'm not making a whole lot of money on it. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, at this time, we'll move into city administrator comments.
Three, three quick ones tonight. Just a reminder that we'll resume yard waste collection. It begins this coming week with set out on Sunday evening for a collection after midnight on Monday. A good opportunity for property owners to set out limbs and branches resulting from winter storms. Also wanted to mention that the North Stars High School hockey team is in the state championship game this Friday. This is the hockey team that plays at the ice rink in Fairgrounds Park. And then, third, wanted to just congratulate Michelle Hepburn. It's wonderful to have her as our finance director and a part of the city department head group. That's it for me.
All right. We're moving to council comments. Start over here on my right and we'll go down the alphabet here. Mr. Alshire.
Sure. Couple of things. The first is in response to the letter we received from Mr. Richards in regard to the Reach Shelter. I would note that this is not the first time we have received this type of correspondence, not the first time we have been asked to assist in addressing that issue, especially the public intoxication of the tenants of that facility. I believe that our last solution, and if you go back in the record, I believe I was opposed to that simple solution, which was simply to put up a camera. A camera does not address folks that choose to congregate in an alley behind Reach intoxicated. And I would only note that I disagree with Mr. Richards' proposal in his letter of, you know, "We need to provide them a 24-hour shelter." If they're certainly not operating in an appropriate manner within our city for the hours in which it is closed, and here some cases open, then we should think long and hard about actually supporting with our public dollars that facility just as much as the notion that we should take these proposed changes in legislation and further direct them to businesses who are affected by this. I also disagree. What I think we should be doing, and what I've said from the outset, is these types of changes to our code should squarely apply to those properties and those facilities as evenly as we would have them be applied to all rentals within our community. The second issue is I know a lot of folks, or a number of folks, signed a petition supporting the proposed changes to 197 and 95. I think that's the two sections. I would reiterate the comments that, for me, this isn't a matter of, of doing nothing. It is a matter of reaching a balance so that we are not overreaching in our efforts and get bogged down in that approach, but rather address the issues within those specific cases that we have in, in a measure that allow staff to focus on, on the problems that exist. And so I certainly also do not see that this will, will be swept from the table, but rather applied as, as it reasonably should be and, and a majority of council can reach. The other item I wanted to address from the comments was the request that, you know, the four unions be recognized via ordinance, which I have never had great concern with. However, what some folks may have missed that was thrown in at the end was a sort of arbitration that would be associated with that within our charter. I would offer that if we're going to do that, then we need two items added for referendum to the next election. One is, and this is a very common- One is, and this is a very complex issue, that a lot of folks just simply don't deal with, is that we need a majority of folks to be able to identify exactly what binding arbitration means in changing our charter before we would allow that authority that the citizens vest in us to be delegated to a binding arbiter. That is not the manner in which I believe our citizens elect us to conduct their business, and certainly not something that I think the citizens would want taken out of the hands of this body that have to deal with our budget each year and balancing the funding we have available and the services we are able to deliver. The next statement is associated with a couple of additional items. It is fortunate that it is Tuesday instead of last Friday. And I say this because I would only offer that last week for me was one of the more difficult weeks that I have had in all of my tenure in elected office. I felt like last week what I was doing was playing catch-up with the issues rather than participating in them. And in so doing, there was an insinuation that, you know, it was my inability to keep up. And I'll give you four examples. And the first is State of the City, which, in talking to some other council members, I don't think there was a great awareness because we had not received formal limitations of that from March 4th. It has now moved to March 18th. The crime-free ordinance, which there was a meeting last week with various parties and, you know, a presentation that, you know, the whole council wasn't aware of, and I believe in the last email from that presenter to inform the full council, said that they were looking forward to the next meeting. I'm not certain how that could be if we were supposed to vote on the issue tonight. The third item is HNDP, which we received an email this past week that we were considering severing ties with when the last discussion, I recall, of this council was that we were to receive a public presentation by that entity. Not saying I support that entity or don't support it, but that was the charge of the council. And the fourth item, which is the meeting for the Urban Partners coming up Thursday night, and we had yet to have a conversation with our appropriate legal staff in regard to their opinion regarding the committee, which has now changed to a panel, which I have just found out some of the members aren't even participating in. I will tell you, in each of these cases, it certainly feels like I'm running in place, but that certainly is of no doing of my own.
Mr. Brubaker.
Yes. Just want to say I went to the symphony the night weekend before last. What an excellent job they do. And repeat once again, thanks to everybody that's participating in the partnership, the city, the county, private contributors, and hopefully the state. Delegate Donahue has introduced a bond bill for, to match the, in fact, we're now over the match for renovating the theater. The theater's come up with the sound program to improve it, and I think already that's a good way to go for the city, and there's all kinds of performances there. I happen to have gone to the symphony. The other thing that upset me last week was the newspaper said, "Library to Charge for Parking," over-the-fold major headline, and it was more than misleading. I've had three people say, "They're not coming downtown. I don't want to pay to park." If you use the library, you have two hours free. I think that encompasses what the time most people use the library. You had to read about five paragraphs deep, and many people either didn't notice it or didn't read that deep. They saw the headline and assumed they had to pay. And getting a lot of complaints about that and working one-to-one by clear them up, I wish the good journalism would be to clear that up. And then finally, yes, there was a meeting with the landlords. It wasn't to be conciliatory to the landlords. It was requested of the mayor. Some of us were asked to participate. And believe me, it was a dialogue. It wasn't a consent, and it still isn't a consent. As the mayor said, there's council members, all of them have different views still on the issues. I think if we can find a strong consensus on this bill, it's going to be much better in the future, and I think we're working towards that. I think we're close to that, and it's certainly, I think, going to follow closely along the lines of the current bill. As Mr. Wheeler pointed out there, or was it in his wife's email? I'm not sure which. She pointed out that, you know, perhaps there was a compromise on the mandatory training sessions. And I'll just, that's just one example of an issue that hasn't been hammered out. But I'll tell you, I'm wavering between mandatory training sessions and either one for felony or two for a other violations, not three. And the reason I still consider mandatory is despite what the good intentions of the leaders of the landlord associations, maybe they're up with everything, but their members aren't, and there are a lot of people that aren't members. And the first thing they say when something happens is, "I didn't know. I didn't realize." And so that's, you know, that weighs on the side of mandatory. But I think you can also say, well, you know, if nothing happens, they don't need to be coerced into doing something. But I don't think the tripping point needs to be when they're a chronic violator. So that's just one example of a few things I think that aren't quite worked out yet. There's others, and if we can have a work session where all those issues are listed, every council member would let the staff know what their concerns are clearly, then we can look this thing.
Yes. Communication is the key. Mr. Metzner.
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Munson.
I would just like to say with regard to the meeting last week that I agree with Martin, and let it go at that.
Anything else? Ms. Nye.
Rodney, the question is for you. I saw an email that had come through that there's going to be a parking area for the dog park. What part is that going to take? What grassy part is it going to take?
Right beside the dog park. It's like a six-space parking lot with three or four of the spaces would be for handicap people to go immediately right into the dog park. It's on the Planning Commission agenda tomorrow night.
Yeah, I know. I saw that, and I figured that you'd be here, but I just wanted to know, okay, how much more?
Between the road and the dog park, there's a grassy area there that's where we're proposing it.
All right. I just wanted to know as far as taking more area. Also, what I would like to comment on is that I know that, I know for myself, and I have to apologize to John Listition on that because I usually hit code right and left. But I do know that with the past council, for three and a half years, that council did relax a lot of our codes that we had, in fact, put in place. And I think that in order to not see what is going on in this city, that we should just put sunglasses on because that's just how bad it has gotten. The streets are, they're horrible. A lot of our codes have had a setback, and I think that we really need to sit down and look at what we had before and what we did lose in that three and a half years and regroup and to do something on that end as well. I also had other letters that had come in to me. Not having the time, but I will present them when we are going through this because, as I say, there are, I would say, if I went every block in the city of Hagerstown, I would have people, renters or otherwise, to tell me of either one or two, if not more, problem homes that there are on their blocks. And that says to me, we've got a problem. That's it.
All right. Well, I do want to further update folks in terms of what's going with Urban Partners. Everyone will recall that the city sent out a press release announcing that there will be a committee. Following the very first meeting of the folks who were named in that press release, we had a council meeting, and there was a concern raised by at least one council member about the nature of this committee, what it would be doing, who was on it, and subsequently three folks backed out of that particular committee. We decided, myself and staff, that the committee would no longer consist of anyone outside of city staff and myself and Mr. Brubaker, and that those folks would be, their participation would be folded under all the other outreach to stakeholders that we are undertaking. I think it's a shame Ms. Bartles is not here, but I know where she lives, and I know she'll come back to City Hall. But I do believe that we are undertaking a very extensive effort at getting outreach in the community. Having a stake means having an interest in what happens in downtown, whether that's folks in the neighborhoods, whether that's whether you're a property owner or a tenant, whether you're a business owner, an elected official, an appointed person, you know, all stakeholder feedback is good and it is helpful. I look forward to the meeting that we're having on Thursday, and I think I misspoke earlier and said it was 6:00. It's actually 6:30 in the community room. That's upstairs in the library. I do want to let folks know, at the last meeting that we held, which was this past Thursday, we received the draft physical analysis and the draft economic and market analysis. I will be forwarding those drafts because they are drafts. There were many typographical errors and other things that were still being ironed out. I will be forwarding those drafts to the council. The schedule is that on April 8th, there will be a work session. At that time, eight catalyst projects will be brought to the council for their endorsement, after which there will be renderings of these projects, pro formas drawn up based on the reality-based, data-driven information that we've received from the market analysis, the physical analysis, and all of the stakeholder feedback that we've gotten, which includes focus groups. That included the Chamber of Commerce, Greater Hagerstown. There were 11 folks in that group, large employers, Next Generation, the Downtown Alliance. There was a housing group, a Neighborhoods group. I believe tomorrow evening, the Planning Commission is going to be meeting with Urban Partners at their regular meeting. They were individual meetings with folks that they had already met with. They still had some meetings pending, but it's a quite extensive list of people. It is not exclusive. I have been willing to take considerations from council members of folks that want to get involved. Of course, anyone has an opportunity to come before us at Citizen Comments, as you know, every month, at least once a month, to provide their feedback. Emails, phone calls, all of those things are important. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows then we're looking at June 17th for a final report from Urban Partners. So that's where we're at. You know, I think it's important, if we want to talk about who's meeting with who, I think it's important to know that I am doing my best, as I believe everybody on this council does, to uphold our oath to diligently and faithfully and without partiality and prejudice execute our oaths of office. And I don't think anybody up here has a character that can be questioned when it comes to the fact that they're meeting with folks. I try to be, again, as transparent as possible to let people know what's going on. I apologize if I don't get information out to council members quickly enough, but they, and I hope they know this, always have my number and can call me anytime. So I hope that that clears up any questions. Again, I'm excited about the public input meeting this Thursday, 6:30 at the library. If you feel like your voice is not being heard, please get in touch with my office, and we'll make sure that your voice is heard. And with that, we will go into the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, can I stop you right there just a minute?
Please.
Because I'm not going to be there Thursday evening. I've got two meetings, and these meetings have been canceled, and I've got to be, especially at that one that's at 5:30. So I just wanted you to know, that's the reason I wouldn't be there.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you. All right, the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval of the minutes as presented by the mayor. Council meetings held on January 7, 14, and January 28, all 2014.
Second. Has been a motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the minutes being approved, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Onto the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that all the consent agenda be approved as presented on our agenda from A through D.
Second. There's been a motion made by Mr. Munson, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and the consent agenda is approved. Next item under unfinished business, item A, approval of an ordinance to increase water rates.
Mayor, hereby move for the approval of an ordinance to increase the unit cost of water rates by 2% per year for inside-city customers and 2% per year for customers outside of the city over the next five fiscal years. These rate increases are necessary to meet the revenue requirements of the water fund in order to keep the fund self-supporting as determined by the recently completed cost of service study prepared for the city by the Municipal Financial Services Group. Detailed individual rate changes in the volume charges and fixed charges by meter size are indicated by fiscal year in the body of the ordinance. The increased rates shall be effective for all bills rendered on or after July 1, 2014, and for all bills rendered on or after July 1 of each of the subsequent four fiscal years.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ordinance is approved. Next is an item to approve an ordinance to increase water rates.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval of an ordinance to increase
I meant sewer rates.
The unit cost of sewer rates at the following amounts for inside-city customers, FY15, 12%, 16, 4%, 17, 4%, 18, and 19, 2%, respectively. The unit cost of sewer rates for customers outside of the city are as follows, FY15, 12%, 16, 4%, 17, 4%, 18, and 19, 2%, respectively. These rates increases are necessary to meet the revenue requirements of the wastewater fund in order to keep the fund self-supporting as determined by the recently completed cost of service study prepared by the city, for the city by the Municipal Financial Services Group. The detailed individual rate changes in the volume charges and fixed charges by meter size are indicated by fiscal year in the body of the ordinance. The increased rates shall be effective for all bills rendered on or after July 1, 2014, and for all bills rendered on or after July 1 of the subsequent four fiscal years.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Alshire, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that the combined rates will still be lower after these increases than neighboring jurisdictions, comparable jurisdictions. In fact, I just saw where one of our neighbors, the rates are going up again next year. So these are necessary to keep the utility system in good shape so we have reliable water and clean wastewater.
Thank you. Let's vote on the motion. All in favor of the motion made by Mr. Alshire, seconded by Mr. Metzner, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Next up, again, I'll remind folks, items C and D will be moved to a special session on March 11th. New business, item A, approval of a resolution, sale and issuance, delivery of the city's Public Improvement Bond of 2014, a general obligation bond.
Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council approval of the attached resolution providing for the sale, issuance, and delivery to PNC Bank, National Association, of the city's Public Improvements Bond of 2014, the bond in the principal amount of $1,735,000 or such lesser principal amount as shall be required to cover the costs of issuance payable from the bond.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
Just to satisfy the legal council, could we read this explanation? It's not part of the motion, but I think it adds some information that's good to have in the record.
I can read. Go for it.
I'll read, since I made the motion, I'll read it for the record. I didn't realize that was necessary. I think it's a lot cleaner with the motion, but I will read it if that's legality.
This isn't part of the motion. Yeah, I think just, she wrote it, and I think it'd be helpful.
Explanation. The resolution provides that the bond shall mature 15 years from the date of its issuance, shall bear interest at the rate of 2.5%. shall bear interest at the rate of 2.5% per annum, and shall be subject to prepayment in a whole or in part on any scheduled semi-annual interest payment date at a prepayment price of 100% of the principal amount being prepaid plus accrued interest. The resolution pledges the city's full faith and credit and unlimited taxing power to payment of the bond and provides that allocable portions of debt service in the bond shall be payable in the first instance from the parking fund and the wastewater fund. The resolution also designates the bond as a, quote, "qualified tax-exempt obligation," end quote, for purposes of Section 265(b)(3) of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, should be Internal Revenue Service Code of 1986, as amended. Contains representations and covenants relating to the tax exempt status of the bond and fixes or provides for other details relating to the bond. Closing on the bond shall take place no later than March 14, 2014, unless otherwise agreed to by PNC.
And my second still stands.
Thank you for that explanation. I do recall on the original, on the introduction of this, there was an abstention. I think that was you, Mr. Alshire, but there was no explanation for the abstention. It said?
That's correct.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Aye.
Okay. Would you like to state the reason for your abstention?
No.
Okay. Abstain. Correct. Motion carries 4 to 1 abstention.
That's 4-0-1.
Right, 4-0-1. Passes with four votes. Item B, the approval of a resolution authorizing an ATM and processing agreement with World ATM to provide ATM machines in the city farmer's market and public parking decks.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that the attached resolution be approved so that the city of Hagerstown can enter into the attached contract with World ATM to provide ATM machines in the city farmer's market, the university district parking deck, and the arts and entertainment district parking deck. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Munson and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Item C is the approval of substructure rehabilitation of three bridges on Burrhands Boulevard.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move to approve a contract with Olympus Painting, Inc. in the amount of $1,312,672 million. I further authorize staff to enter into an inspection services agreement with Maryland State Highway Administration and enter into an agreement with Norfolk Southern Railroad to reimburse Norfolk Southern for their flagman on the project. All of the above is funded by 80% federal aid and 20% by the city. All is outlined in the attached contract information form.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Alshire, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
I intend to vote for this, but I do want to say that I think that Norfolk Southern is taking a great deal of advantage of us within this. Although since we're doing something very good for the citizens, I guess we got no choice but to go along with it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Next up is the approval of Hagerstown Suns fireworks scheduled 2014.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move the mayor and council through ten fireworks shows for the Hagerstown Suns baseball scheduled during the 2014 season, and the mayor and council's approval will exempt those ten shows in the city of Hagerstown's noise ordinance under Section 155-3 of the city code. The Monday, May 5 show is predicated upon the game starting no later than 6:35 p.m.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, item E, under new business, approval of health care changes for FY15.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move the mayor and council approve for staff to proceed with the recommended change to the health care program as discussed during the February 11, 2014 work session. The proposed changes to the program are recommended by the city's health care committee, and approval of this motion will allow staff to begin the process of implementing the changes and communicating with participants.
Motion made by Mr. Alshire, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion?
Yes, I want to thank the health care committee and other staff for their work left in place. Our increase for this, for health care would have been 13.1%. We've got it down to 8.9%, and I want to remind people that the city is picking this up and not putting it on the backs of employees at this point.
And we have for, what, five years? No changes in health care costs? Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number, item number F, approval of a contract revision for consultant services for the economic analysis and implementation plan for the Hagerstown Sustainable Community Plan. I would like to note in the motion, December 3, 2014 should be December 3, 2013.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and city council approval to revise contract for urban partners to provide additional $6,500 that will allow for additional community engagement activities. The possibility of an expansion of the scope of services was acknowledged in the motion to award the contract to urban partners on December 3, 2013, provided total cost did not exceed the grant award amount of $100,000. With this change, contract to urban partners increases from 79, 9, 10 to 86, 4, 10. The Maryland Department of Business and Economic Development grantor has indicated that this contract revision is acceptable.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to say that I've talked to a number of people who have talked to urban partners, and they've been very highly complimentary of the efforts that urban partners are making to help advance the city of Hagerstown.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, and we will be adjourned.